No, I'm not switching jobs. I'm just up here because our city council president and vice president, who were here previously, are no longer with us on the council. So I'm gonna go ahead and kick off the meeting and then we will move directly to election of officers. So I'll call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to ask John Weingart to start the conversation about election of officers. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first council meeting of 2020. Welcome everybody to be here. Welcome to our new council members. Have the privilege of talking about officers for our council coming into 2020 and certainly want to have as a motion or talk about having Cecilia Cobble being our president this year. Cecilia's been a great member of our council and a great friend of mine. As you see her out in the community, she's very active in the community. So I will wholeheartedly have a motion to elect Cecilia as council president.
Second.
We have a motion by John. We have a second by Pete. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. John, would you like to call for a vote?
Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations, Cecilia.
Yay.
Thank you.
I also have to say, I think this might be the first time that there's ever been a female as the, definitely as a city council and probably as a town going back as well. So I'm really excited to see. This is a historic day for the city of Fisher. So congratulations, Cecilia. It's a good day forward for the city of Fishers. Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank my city council colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to serve as president for this 2020 city council year. And at this time, I want to welcome our new city council members that are joining us today. Sam DeLong, welcome. And Jocelyn Dare. Please give them a warm round of applause. On behalf of the city council, we look forward to working very closely with both of you to serve our community and to look for ways to work together and to work in benefit of our community. And so, thank you for your service and we look forward to working with you for the next four years.
Thank you.
And then for vice president, I'd like to nominate Selena Stoller. She's done a great job on the council and so I'd like to put forth a motion for Selena Stoller to be our vice president. Second.
Any discussion? Closed the discussion. Can we call for a vote? We have a motion to select, elect Selena Stoller as the council vice president, which has been seconded. I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor of electing Selena Stoller as council vice president, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Selena. Look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start out our council meeting with our announcements. We have Chief Giffhart today swearing in our new police officers. Chief, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much for having us for this and we look forward to this.
I say your name.
Aye.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and comply?
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America?
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Fisher, Indiana?
The laws and ordinances of the city of Fisher, Indiana.
The rules and regulations of the Fisher Police Department?
The rules and regulations of the Fisher Police Department.
And the law enforcement, courtesy of the State Department?
And the law enforcement, courtesy of the State Department.
I will pay fully discharge for use of my office?
That will pay fully discharge for use of my office.
As a police officer, best of my ability?
As a police officer, best of my ability.
As a...
Thank you, Chief Giffhart. Thank you to all the men and women who serve in law enforcement. Here in Fishers, we have some of the finest individuals working to keep our community safe. So we thank you for everything that you do for our community. Next, I believe we do not have any presentations at the moment, or proclamations, I'm sorry.
Correct.
So we're gonna go next to presentation of service awards. We have Chief Arusa and Chief Giffhart, too, coming up to present the service awards for their department.
Thank you, President Cobble. It gives me a great honor to announce the celebration of 20 years of service to two of our fire officers. I'd like to ask Captain Jamie Burrows and his family to come forward. Captain Burrows is accompanied by his son Connor, 15-years-old, and his beautiful daughter Soretta, who's 20-years-old. I'd like to just give you a few highlights of Jamie's 20 years of service. Jamie was hired in January of 2000. In 2007, in February, he became a lieutenant. And in January in 2014, he became a captain. So he made a meteoric rise in our fire department. In addition, he has served his hometown of Chesterfield, Indiana, as a volunteer firefighter for 25 years, the last seven as fire chief. He is a District Five, and District Five is Marion County and all the surrounding counties. He serves on the incident management team. He's been deployed to a variety of disasters and his role is helping to manage the incident. We've been deployed together and I can tell you, he's been my hand man on more than one occasion. And he is also a member of Indiana Task Force One, the US, the USAR Task Force Team, Urban Search and Rescue. And he is a hazmat specialist and he's been on over four deployments, some of them overseas. Jamie, thank you for serving our community and serving our citizens for over a generation. God bless you. Mayor, would you take a picture with his family? Let's come over here. Second, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Dwayne Reddick and his wife Carolyn to come up. Is this the starting five with you, brother? Accompanying Lieutenant Dwayne Reddick, obviously is his wife Carolyn. Taylor, 14, raise your hand when I call your name. Okay, eight and 13. Brooklyn, 12. Carter, 11. Melanie, two. Melanie's not here. Oh, Melanie, Melanie, two. Whoa.
She appreciates it.
Got a light bench. Lieutenant Reddick, some of the highlights in his career. He actually started on the Fishers Fire Department in 1991, so that's actually 25 years. He was five years as an explorer, right, Dwayne?
Correct.
So we got you like right out of high school?
Yep. Well, I was still in high school.
You're still in high school?
Yeah.
We raised him young here. In July 1995, he was hired full-time. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 2003 to 2011. And he was deployed on active duty to Iraq in 2006 and 2007. In 2016, he received the Meritorious Service Award. Jamie, thank you for unselfishly serving the citizens of Fishers for over a generation. Great job.
And do we have one more? Chief Giffhart? We have another one.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize one of our officers, 25 years. Dave Seward, will you come forward, sir? Lieutenant Dave Seward. I've been rehearsing all day, man. Look, Dave came on our police department in 1995. He served for 25 years. So you're seeing day one and you're seeing 25 full years. But I've known Dave since I came on the department in 2000. Dave has been instrumental in a lot of different areas in our agency. He's been a detective. He rose to the ranks as sergeant, spent time in the detectives. He's also been on our fact crash team, made lieutenant in there. He was my lieutenant for a period of time there when I came on the agency. He's also an FBI National Academy graduate and we're proud of that fact. He's helped out with a lot of various leadership roles within our agency and he's definitely pivotal and a part of the bricks to the foundation of our department. So for a person, Dave, that I always feel bled blue and look for the agency, I really appreciate what you've done for us and it's all about you tonight, 25 years.
Congratulations for your service and all you do for our community. Next on the agenda is the Finance Committee report. This month, the Finance Committee did not meet, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second by?
Second.
I have a motion by Pete, a second by John. Are there any discussion?
Yes. President Cobble, I would move that item A, the approval of the previous meeting minutes, be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Please note that the item number A is a request to approve last month's meeting minutes of the council, which routinely occurs at every council meeting. Chris, we're gonna move that to the bottom of the agenda.
You need a second to do that.
No, Brad, any council member can move an item off the consent agenda. So as Council President Cobble just mentioned, that item's just gonna be moved to the bottom of the agenda. So we'll just take that and place it at the bottom.
So I guess my motion would then be to approve items B, C, and D on the consent agenda?
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next, we are going on to regular, the irregular agenda items. Economic development, item eight, R012120B, request to approve confirmatory resolution designating certain property as an economic revitalization area and authorizing an abatement. And there's a public hearing with this. And we have a member of our staff coming to make a presentation. Megan?
Thank you. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, City of Fisher's Economic Development Director. This is the first confirmatory resolution on the agenda tonight. We have a second one and this process applies to both of these. So at our previous meeting last month, this council approved the economic development agreement for the Mattingley property, which is located off of Zero Sunlight Drive. As part of that, we began the process of the abatement approval, which was the declaratory resolution and the approval of the statement of benefits. This item tonight is approving the confirmatory resolution and the second step is part of this, which also has the public hearing component. And happy to answer any questions from council as well.
And I just want to remind the public that the council unanimously approved this project agreement during the December meeting. As part of the project agreement, the council agreed to waive certain fees and provide an eight-year real property tax abatement on each of the buildings constructed on the site. Years one through seven will be abated at 100% and year eight will be abated at 50%. And so, in order to follow through our commitment in the project agreement to grant this abatement, the council must establish an economic revitalization area and authorize the abatement through a two-step process. So this is the first step to approve the declaratory resolution, which the council approved last month at the last month's meeting. And then the last step of the abatement process is to approve a confirmatory resolution designating the property as an economic revitalization area and authorizing the abatement after conducting a public hearing. So I'd like to call for a public hearing at this time. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this project abatement may come forward. You will be given three minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and your address for the record. Seeing no public comment, we will close the public comment period.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Todd. All in favor? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, okay. Looks like the ayes have it. Any opposed? Looks like it passed.
I abstain.
And one abstention. Okay, thank you.
Cecilia, if you don't mind, Council President Cobble, can we just have a show of hands on who voted for that? I think it was a little unclear. If we could just recall the vote and ask for the ayes and the nays one more time and the abstentions so we can make it clear.
Okay, so there was a motion for approval by Pete and second by Todd. So now we need...
We can roll call it, too.
Yep, we'll just do it. Yeah, we can do a roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Jenny?
Jennifer, do you mind reading the members?
Cecilia Cobble?
Yay.
Selena Stoller, aye.
That was aye, sorry. That's what I meant to say.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Dr. Reamer?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong? Jocelyn Dare?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed, okay. Now we're on to item number nine, R012120C. This is a request to approve confirmatory resolution designating certain property as an economic revitalization area and authorizing the abatement of the Amp West. There is a public hearing. Again, as a reminder to the public, similar to the previous agenda item, this resolution is the last step of the abatement process for a different project, the Amp West. The council unanimously approved the project agreement for this project in December of 2018. At last month's meeting, the council approved the First Amendment to the project agreement. As part of the project agreement, the city council agreed to provide the developer with a seven-year real property tax abatement at the following rates. Years one through three at 100, year four at 80%, years five at 60%, year six at 40%, and year seven at 20%. In order to follow through our commitment in the project agreement to grant this abatement, the council must establish an economic revitalization area and authorize the abatement through also a two-step process. The first is to approve a declaratory resolution, which the council approved at last month's meeting. The last step of the abatement process is to approve a confirmatory resolution designating the property as an economic revitalization area and authorizing the abatement after conducting a public hearing. So I want to turn it over to Megan Baumgartner for her presentation on the project.
Thank you, President Cobble. As you stated, this is the confirmatory resolution for the Amp West project. And just for a bit of context, it's kind of catty-cornered to the new fire station that's under construction, or the fire station that is under construction. They have not broken ground on this project yet. But we ask for council's approval of the confirmatory resolution tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'm gonna now open it up for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about this abatement may come forward and please state your name. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll now close the public hearing and I would...
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve 012120C by Pete, second by John. Is there any discussion? I'm going to close the discussion and ask for a record, a vote. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
I abstain.
Two abstentions? One abstention, I'm sorry. Jocelyn, okay. Okay, item number 10 has been pulled from the agenda today. We're gonna move on to item number 11. It's R012120E. This is a request to approve an amendment to the rules and rules of procedure for the common council of the city of Fishers. And this is a first reading. Just for background, two years ago, the council created Uniform Rules of Procedure for city council meetings. These rules largely govern the parliamentary procedure by which our meetings are run. At the time the rules were adopted, the council made a determination to not hear certain planning and zoning items for an initial reading prior to those items coming, going to the Planning Commission for its statutorily required public hearing. The amendment being proposed tonight is to stipulate that those, that those planning and zoning items come back to the city council for an introductory review prior to going to the Plan Commission so that the council may give it its initial opinion to all parties involved. And so, making his presentation is our attorney, Chris Greisel.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Cobble. Members of the council, for the record, Chris Greisel, city attorney. Council President Cobble summarized it very clearly, but I'll just go over a few points. So back in February of 2018, this council approved its rules of procedure. And the rules do largely govern, as Council President Cobble mentioned, general characteristics of this council, including parliamentary procedures. For various reading reasons, there was a decision at the time not to have the council entertain first readings of certain planning and zoning items. And as we went through a little bit in work session tonight, Indiana code regulates how text amendments to zoning ordinances or initial ordinances for zoning matters are adopted and approved by the city. And that process going through a statutorily required public hearing at the Advisory Plan Commission, who then certifies a proposal back to the city council for its final recommendation within certain time periods. After two years, the council's decided that a better process can occur. I think if all parties understand the council's position prior to sending that proposal back to the Advisory Plan Commission. So the simple amendment, which is before you on first reading tonight, is to do just that. It's to ensure that any petition that comes forward to the Plan Commission is first brought here to the city council for an introductory reading. That will then be delivered to the Plan Commission to start its statutorily required public process with the hope that when it comes back to the council for final consideration, the council will have heard the proposal before. They will have given their input and their thoughts on the proposal and then the process will come back to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to have first reading? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going on to item number 12, R012120F, request to approve a resolution adopting a fiscal plan for the Ahmed Karim annexation. And so, this resolution, items 12 and 13 on the agenda pertain to the same voluntary annexation. So as a reminder to the public, voluntary annexations generally follow a three-step process. During last month's council meeting, we held an initial reading of the annexation ordinance and conducted its public hearing in accordance with Indiana law, which is step one. And then, prior to adopting the annexation ordinance, which will be items 13 on the agenda, Indiana law requires that council to approve the fiscal plan for the annexation, which is step two. And then, step three will be the final reading of the annexation ordinance, which is item 13 on the agenda. So I would like to turn it over to our staff for presentation.
And then quickly, if I can, President Cobble, since these are voluntary annexations and because we're allowing people to come into our town voluntarily, unless there's any objection, I'm gonna not need a staff report on this and I'm gonna make a motion to approve these separately, but I'm gonna make a motion to approve item 12 first.
We have a motion to approve R012120F by Pete. Do we have a second? Second by John. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Then I'll make a motion to approve item 13. And it's a great report, Megan, by the way.
Okay, we have a motion to approve R, I'm sorry, ordinance 121619A. Motion by Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor to approve ordinance 121619A, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item 14, this is 012120, request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as QCOM Lot 2 property, located at 11219 East 126th Street. And it consists of approximately .3 acres. And this is first and second reading and a public hearing. And so, again, this is the first step of the voluntary annexation process to conduct the initial reading and hold a statutorily required public hearing. So I want to, again, turn it over to staff.
Unless there's any other comments from council, I would suggest we open the public hearing on a voluntary annexation.
Do we want to call for a public reading?
I think since this is an introductory annexation, Pete, we should let Megan make her presentation and then move forward.
Again, I have no issue doing that, Chris, but again, it's voluntary. So that's the only reason why I say that. I'm not trying to circumvent any knowledge. Somebody wants to come into our city, that's my only point. These are statutory requirements. So certainly I have no problem with Megan giving a report. She gives great reports, as always, but that was the purpose behind my...
I would like the presentation. I would like the presentation.
Yeah, okay. So for the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. So the item before you is for a voluntary annexation. So we have areas in the city that are unincorporated or outside of city limits. And if they meet the state law requirements of being 1/8 contiguous to city limits, then they have the opportunity to voluntarily annex. So this property, it's actually surrounded by city limits. So the green in this picture represents city limits and that red triangle is the property that is looking to voluntarily annex. So because it meets state requirements, staff is supportive of it. And according to the annexation procedures, state law requires that we hold first reading and have a public hearing.
So the voluntary annexation does require a public hearing. I'd like to go ahead and open up for a public hearing. At this time, anyone... At this time, anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to have first reading? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
So the next step is the fiscal plan, and final reading of the voluntary annexation will appear on the February council meeting. So we're on to item number 15. This is 012120A, request to approve a text amendment to the Parkside PUD ordinance concerning the use and development of real estate, and this is a first reading. This is an introductory reading of the Parkside PUD ordinance concerning the use and development of real estate. After tonight, this item will go before the plan commission where it will conduct a public hearing and certify a proposal back to the council for its final consideration. And we have Tony Bogato from the Planning Department to provide a presentation.
Yes, good evening, Council. Tony Bogato, Director of Planning. This item is here for first reading. It has not been in the plan commission yet, so since it just started the process and we knew we were changing the rules, we wanted to bring it here for introduction. The Parkside PUD is located along State Road 37, just north of 126th Street up to 131st Street. What we're facing here, working with the developer, is that given the widening of State Road 37, there's been a loss of property, and there's many buildings that are built today that will no longer comply with the existing setback. So the required setback in the PUD is 50 feet, and now within this stretch, this area's been reduced down to 30 feet for buildings like where the Ram, former Ram, was located. And so it makes these buildings legal but non-conforming, so if they were burned down or destroyed by more than 50 percent, they could not rebuild in that location, which is causing some financial issues for purchasing the buildings that are vacant and trying to reoccupy them. And in addition, we are looking at a redevelopment proposal for the Ram property. With that being a restaurant, there is a lot of extra parking there for a non-restaurant use, and we are looking at office going in that building, so they want to occupy that parking lot with some future commercial building there, and they want to be able to put it at the same 30-foot setback that the Ram is at today. So we're just basically bringing this for introduction, stating that we're going to reduce the setback from 50 feet to 30 feet, just so that these buildings are not in a non-conforming status because of the State Road 37 project. So what you see out there today, the existing Ram, that's what all the buildings would look like the same. So nothing changes physically, it's just a matter of changing the setback from 50 to 30 because of the state, the road widening.
Thank you, Tony. Is there a motion to have first reading for ordinance?
Do you have any discussion?
Well, we'll do that after.
Well, we have first reading.
Well, with first reading, we want discussion first and then-
Discussion first.
Okay, okay. I have it as opposite. Okay. Any discussion?
Tony, is there any others along 37 this is going to happen to, do you think?
I think we've already changed the one for, it did happen with the Harley-Davidson building. We've already made those changes. That's property. Since the property owner for the Ram came to this, they were initially only changing their property, and we suggested this whole entire PUD. So we believe this should at least deal with this stretch between 126th Street and 131st.
Inducts gave us a plan, so we have Jason check.
Yeah, we can cross-reference what's being developed.
Check that, and let's do them all and be fair.
Yeah, we can check them all. We'll have to do each PUD separately by ordinance, but we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Have first reading.
Okay. Had first reading. Now this will go to the plan commission, and we'll conduct a public hearing and certify a recommendation back to the council for our final consideration. So now we're at to item 16, 012120B. This is a request to approve a rezone from C3 Commercial with a commercial use limit overlay to C3 Commercial. Subject site is located at 8766 East 96th Street, and it's the former site of the Marsh Supermarket. The property is approximately 7.91 acres, and there's a final reading today. In 2000, just for some history, in 2017, the city council took proactive measures to place a zoning overlay on several properties, including this vacant Marsh building. The result culminated in an economic development agreement with Strongbox that was approved during the December council meeting. The plan commission has conducted its statutorily required public hearing and a unanimous recommendation approval for this ordinance, so at this time, I'd like Tony Bogato to come and present on this project.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this item is here for final reading tonight because it was in the process before we changed the rules, and it already had the plan commission public hearing. So this is the former Marsh site located at 96th Street, just west of Lantern Road, and we've been working with developer Strongbox to redevelop the site. And the overlay zone today basically requires anyone larger than 5,000 square feet to be grocery user, which was intentional by the city to protect the redevelopment of these areas. And so with the new proposal, again, this just zone commercial with the overlay, here's the concept plan we've been reviewing and working with the developer. There will be reducing the building square footage of the existing Marsh by about 20,000 square feet, and then redoing the parking lot to the east of that building, and then opening up the opportunity for new, kind of a standard retail building out front. There'll be separate projects built separately, but it'll allow them additional square footage for a commercial spec building. They will be redoing the parking lot, enhancing it and creating more landscaping than that's there today, so we do see it as an overall improvement. And if the council recalls, as part of the economic development agreement, they will be installing some license plate reader. That's not part of the zoning ordinance, but I just want to highlight that. So there is some, they're going to have a waiver of fees from that agreement and help, kind of help with the beautification enhancement of 96th Street. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Plan commission held the public hearing and supported this.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 012120B?
So moved.
Moved by Pete, second by Todd. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 17. This is 012120C, consideration of a tax amendment to Chapter 6 and Chapter 8 of the Unified Developmental Ordinance, oh wait, ordinance UDO and its, as it relates to open space standards. So the city director of planning and zoning, Tony Bogato, has updated the council during tonight's work session regarding the city open space standards, and Tony is coming up to provide some more information.
Yeah, so I'll keep it brief, since we had a work session on this item and the council's already discussed it. The plan commission already held the public hearing on this, so it's a text amendment to change our existing standards that apply to open space around non-residential development. And so with the proposal tonight, we were going to highlight the changes that, again, this only applies to non-residential standards in place today, and it would move from Chapter 8 to Chapter 6. We were looking to do an exemption for two lots, for lots that are two acres or less. And then we're reducing the overall percentage requirement that is in standards today, reduces it by 5 percent across the board. So if a property is zone C1 for an office user or C2 for a small-scale residential or neighborhood commercial, it would go from 12 percent today to 7. C3, which is our larger commercial developments, shopping centers typically where grocery stores are or other big-box retailers, and then I1 is industrial, the requirement today is 15 percent, would go down to 10. And then PUDs are planning unit developments that council gets to approve would reduce from 20 percent down to 15. The plan commission, as I mentioned, did recommend approval, so there was some discussion during the work session about revisiting the exemption for two acres or less. So if the city council would like to make that change and address that through an in-lug fee option, staff would recommend that the city council direct us to make a change to the ordinance and go back to plan commission for further consideration. If not, you can approve it as is tonight without that change.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we continue this and send it back to the planning commission.
So Pete, I think there's a clarification here.
Sure.
For us to be able to do this legally and logistically, we would need an amendment, a proposed amendment from you to the ordinance as stated before you today that would eliminate the two-acre exemption, and in doing so, you would substantively change it enough to send it back to the plan commission for them to further work on it. So what we really need for you guys from a consideration is an amendment that would eliminate that language, and if you voted on that, then it would get sent back to the plan commission.
So to make sure I understand, Scott, if I make a motion to take the two acres or less off as an amendment-
Correct.
-we're still voting on this, or we're sending the whole thing back by the amendment?
By amending it, you've made a substantive enough change that it has to go back to the plan commission.
You have three options, Councilor Peterson. You have the option, since you've certified the proposal as the plan commission, to approve it, to reject it, or to amend it back to the plan commission. So if you're going to make a substantive change to the ordinance, it needs to be by a formal amendment, and then we'll send it back to-
And the amendment would be voted on here is what you're looking for.
That's correct.
And I'm going to go ahead and make the amendment to change the two acres or less.
You eliminate the exemption.
Eliminate the exemption for the two acres or less. As an amendment to this.
And as a staff perspective, we know, based on our discussion, that we're going to work on language and all of that as we go back to the plan commission and try to come back with a better model.
So Chris, if I didn't state that right, help me out there.
So, yeah, so you've made a motion to-
Amend.
To amend the proposal before you to remove the exemption-
The exemption for the two acre, right.
Of two acres to send it back to the plan commission.
And one thing, I, you know, it's a weird discussion in the work session today. I'm kind of with you along. I'm concerned, the only concern I have is with those entrepreneurs that are coming out there that are, you know, one-man, woman shop there and having additional burden with that fee. So I need to work through that a little bit. So I just want to make sure I'm not, I don't want to vote yes to something that ends up, you know, that I can't go back. So I just, I want to make sure, even though I support what we're trying to do, is work through this. But I want to make sure I vote the right way, because I am not currently supportive without further discussion about entrepreneurs.
The plan commission should come back with a statement-
Correct.
And not make it, is one of their options.
That's correct. And you do, as a council body, you do have 90 days to consider this proposal as well. So if you wanted to table this proposal and have further discussion before sending it back to the plan commission, you could certainly do that as well.
If I vote no, does that kill this, or is it okay if I vote?
No, because you're voting on an amended proposal that's been put forward by Councilor Peterson. So there's three options that have been put forward to you. As a council, you have three options. And so the option that has been levied in a motion right now is to amend the proposal and send it back to the plan commission. So if you vote no on that, then we'll just have to take some subsequent action, whether it's to approve the ordinance as is, or whether it's to take some subsequent action, like tabling the ordinance for further consideration.
So if I withdraw my motion and I make a motion to table, where does it go?
It stays here.
Stays here.
It stays here, yeah. We'd have to talk about it in February, because after February, the 90 days would be certified. So we do have one more meeting to talk about if we want to continue it and come up with language that we can introduce for discussion and then have it amended at the next meeting.
It would still have to be sent back.
That's correct.
Correct, but you have the February-
It's your done amendment.
Correct, yes. Yeah, to amend it, it has to be sent back, and we can still do that in February if you want that clarified.
So we're better off sending it back tonight than working another month with it.
Right, I agree.
The only catch to that, Brad, that I will add is that the proposal you send back in an amendment to the plan commission, if the plan commission approves that amendment wholesale, it'll be an adopted ordinance. So the plan commission could further amend whatever we send back, and in that case, it'll come back to the council for your final consideration. So if you want more time to work on the amendment, then you could make a motion to table the ordinance.
Well, you have three council members on the plan commission, so you should have the opportunity to provide the context back to the plan commission about Todd and Pete's concerns. There's a broader conversation here than just excluding the two acres.
Yes, Mr. Peterson- So if I send it to the plan commission, I can now, on the plan commission-
Correct.
-discuss this in detail and get, so I'm not trapping us in something that I don't want to be involved in.
So my motion will stand there to amend.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to make the amended changes, and there's a second by John. Any further discussion?
Just clarification, the question at hand is maybe deeper dive into the types of businesses that are in the two acres or less, to be sure that we're not hindering businesses, right? That's the issue at hand, and the plan commission is the best place to get that worked out. Correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this ordinance with the amendment-
Do we have a second?
And taking it back to the planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay. So we have an-
Councilmember Cobal-
We got to go back to 7A.
Right.
We now have number, which will be new number 18, which is the consent agenda. Item number A.
Yes.
Which is the request to approve the previous meeting minutes. That include the executive session minutes from the December 16, 2019 council meeting, as well as the December 16, 2019 regular session minutes. So if there's any discussion or any questions for me, please let me know.
Do we have a motion to approve number, item 18?
So moved.
Moved by Pete, second by Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes.
I abstain.
One abstention.
I abstain.
And two abstentions, okay. Jocelyn, there, and Councilmember DeLong. Okay. Okay. Moving on, do we have any unfinished business or new business?
Councilor Cobal, I have just one, I don't know if this is the right form to do that. We did have appointments to our boards and commissions tonight. There is an opening on our not-for-profit committee, and I know that's approval, but Councilvar has expressed an interest in that and didn't know if we need to have a motion to do that or just appoint her to that committee.
Make a motion to appoint her.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Was just not-for-profit committee?
Who, who you're appointing?
Jocelyn. Not-for-profit committee.
Okay. Okay. Now we're going to move on to the community comment period.
Because she took something off of the consent, she doesn't have a form or an assignment back to the plan commission.
So what will happen is I will draft an amendment language back to the plan commission because the action that this body took was neither to approve the ordinance that was in front of you or to deny it. So I will have a formal letter that I will send back to the plan commission notifying them of the action that you all took today, and then we'll include that in the minutes for the meeting, and then the plan commission will have that as its official instructions back to you. And it'll be sent knowing that the motion passed unanimously.
I'm also talking about proof of the amendment, she doesn't have a form or an assignment under the one and four.
Oh, under the consent agenda.
Brad, talking about the consent agenda.
So we'll include those in the minutes as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the minutes for the next meeting, we'll note that it was removed from the, yeah, we'll note that it was removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular items. And then we'll also note that a vote was taken, and seven members passed it with two extensions from council members DeLong and there. Thank you, Brad. Yep, thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the community comment period. There is a sign-up sheet going around for members wishing to address the council. Chris, do we have anybody signed up at this time?
You should get them there and sign where you're abstaining.
Okay. It looks like we do have a few people, okay. If you wish to come and address the council, please come forward, state your name and address. For the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I won't take three minutes. My name is Greg Purvis, 12271 Chiseltstone Drive. I have a request, and some of you already know this, I have a significant hearing impairment, and I wear hearing aids to compensate for that, but if you folks up here don't make sure your microphone is on and that you're speaking into it, I can't hear a word you're saying, and I'm not the only one. I know some citizens have spoken to me about it, recognizing my nice little electronic ears up here. But please, just make sure you're doing what I'm doing now, and it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. There was an Eddie McHague, McHague? Not sure if I, McHarg? Sorry, Eddie McHarg? Would they like to come up? No.
No.
No. Okay. Wayne?
I thought you were...
Okay, Wayne, okay. Mike Colby, Mike Colby.
Earl, that's a tree out there, there.
Did you expect anything else the first meeting? My name is Mike Colby, I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive. Congratulations to the new council members and to everybody that's sitting up there. Been up there before, it's a tough job, you put in a lot of time. As a citizen, I appreciate that. What I came up to talk to you about, though, is I'm wondering whether or not there's going to be a list made available of the streets, residential streets that are set for repaving in 2020. In particular, River Glen Drive is a pass-through, so we don't get the residential traffic, we get the residential plus the pass-through traffic. We also have a street, Pembroke, which gets the traffic going back to the maintenance building, which consists of dump trucks, fire trucks, command vehicles from the police department, and just generally increasing traffic. So I've noticed it's pretty bumpy out there, even, I mean, my Model A picks it up, but that'll happen anyway, but my other vehicles as well, and I've asked my, as President of the homeowners' associates, I've been asked to bring that forward.
Thanks, Mike. Ashley, I think we have something we're putting up on our website that'll have all this year's proposed resurfacing. I can't speak specifically to which roads in River Glen, if they are not, but there'll be something up on the website shortly.
I think he has a little...
Yeah, that'll have all that. Thanks, Mike.
I thought you already had it on there.
I thought we did, too.
Yeah. Mike, are you signed up for everything in the Fishers to get it pushed out to you?
I'm signed up for a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe I should... Just click the all box, and then everything will come to you?
I don't think we've pushed out yet the resurfacing, so we need to get that out, what we plan on, and I think we have our first bid award at the Board of Works coming up here, so we should be able to confirm that. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. We have another person wishing to speak, Luis Nino. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Luis Nino, I live in Bunker Hill, Indiana. I'd like to start off by saying, without trying to embarrass or disrespect, but ask the mayor, do you know who I am, sir?
You're an inspector in the Stormwater Department?
Thank you very much for that, sir. I'm big into leadership by example, and Mayor, you gave me the answer I was hoping for. I recognize Mr. Deremer. I don't live here, I live about an hour and a half, or an hour away, so it's a two-hour trip for me, and I just got off of work. Like the mayor said, I'm the Stormwater Inspector, and I like to say that I worked for the best management team that I've ever had the pleasure to work for under Rick Farman and Jonathan Valente and Jason Armour, and that didn't even includes in the 20 years I was in the Marine Corps. That's something for the city of Fishers to be proud of. But I came here under duress, so I'm just going to speak from the heart, and I'm not trying to be controversial, what have you, and I'm not anger, but as a Marine of 20 years, I'm a proud American. But I would like to say, I served 20 years in the Marine Corps, and I'm big into leadership by example in Kandor. I taught Marines to stand up when you seen something wrong, and to have the ability to come forward, and I can honestly say, the three men I work under have had that open-door policy, which has, as a contractor, made it very easy for me when I seen something, even as early as today, working for the city. But as a contractor, I've been here for bell camp for three years, and yesterday was Martha Luther King Day. As a contractor, I don't get holiday pay, vacation pay, medical pay, nothing, and I know Rick has talked to me in the past, you know, that it's not in the budget. But it comes to a point, when you hear President Trump talk about how, and brags that how we've won, ever since he's come in office, as a Marine of 20 years, I don't feel like I've won, and been patiently waiting for my chance to see if I can come aboard. And I was told that 2020 budget doesn't include my position, so I come to speak heart-to-heart to the decision-makers. You know, I found out from bell camp on Friday that after six months, the city could have put me on, and for whatever reason, again, I'm not questioning your judgment or whatever, but I wanted to put a face to a name as well, because I love what I do here for the city of Fishers, but it comes to a point, you know, driving two hours a day, that, you know, what's there to relocate for, if it's not going to be something at the end of the rainbow? So in conclusion, I'd like to just say, I did go to Washington, DC. I'm big into that American flag. I buried the first five Marines killed in the state of Indiana after 9/11. I lost a young Marine from Anderson, Indiana, 20 years old. I was a senior Marine at the very first ever wounded warriors, where I seen my 50 Marines, I should say our 50 Marines, at the very first wounded warriors that lost their limbs and sanity for this country. So, trying to conclude it, because I know I'm on a three-minute time limit, is that being an American does mean something, and I'd just like to read what Martha Luther King said yesterday. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at challenge and controversy." I don't believe this is controversy, but it is a challenge, because I've learned in the times I've been in America, as an American-born, that any time somebody speaks up, they become the troublemaker, or labeled, you know, the bad apple. So I would just simply ask, it don't have to be an answer now, but if there's any chance of this position ever coming full-time, and if not, again, I'm not mad, I'm not anger, I love what I do for the city, and I think city of Fishers is the number-one metropolitan city, not in Indiana, but in the United States. I believe as an American who served 20 years, I deserve a little bit better, so in conclusion, again, I just want to say, the only reason I'm here, the gentleman talked about his, you know, being deaf, that's where I'm at. I had a reconstruction ear surgery, I only worked four days here, and your staff let me go off, which I truly appreciated, and welcomed me back, and it was non-VA care, and I'd just simply say, President Trump says the VA care is so great, I had to transfer from Marion to Indianapolis last week, and still waiting to get my ears checked on, but I can't hear nothing out of my right ear, so I can understand what the gentleman's talking about, not being able to hear.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Let me speak clearly, thank you, first of all, for your service to our country.[1732.23]